We have computers set up to live feed this through my website. So everybody understands I'm Representative George Dunbar. This is my first town hall this year. I do have a bunch of them. I try to have five or six a year. I do like to hear what everybody says. I do like to hear everybody's opinion. I don't always, we don't always see, I agree, but that's all right. That's what I'm here to do, is hear your opinion so I know how I should be voting on certain issues in Harrisburg. This town hall meeting, we've tried to gear each one towards something specific. This town hall meeting, we tried to gear to our younger adults. So we have a lot of younger adults, mostly Norman, or Norman kids? All the Norther kids? And all the Penracker kids stayed home? Is that what happened there? There we go. All right. What's your next leader?
Emily.
Emily, who's class here? Mrs. Smith or?
I had Mrs. Smith last year I graduated.
Okay, because I said you get extra, extra credit for being here and sitting in the front row. So you'll get double extra credit. But I'm glad for all the young people who came out today. For those, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Moses, Mr. Trichester, I thought I called him here somewhere. He's hiding in the back. Thank you for your involvement. Thanks for getting the kids involved in government. It's important to me to be here to hear from you as well. I also want to thank Joe Pia from Manor Borough, Joseph McBarrett, for hosting us tonight. Manor is new to my district. It's the first time I've represented Manor, starting in January of this year. So it's nice for me to get down to Manor, get to see everybody down here, and hear what your questions are as well. Just a brief background of what I've been up to. I'm in my third year in the House. I'm starting, I'm in year five, just starting my third term. And I'm on various different committees of various different organizations. So if you know what I'm working on in Harrisburg, it may help you with some questions, especially economic questions. I am, first off, and there's my daughter. Look at that. Now, yours are Penracker kids. My daughter, late. Mr. Moses, I don't know if she gets all her extra credit. First off, I'm under debt task force. Speaker of the House, the Speaker of the House appointed five members to the debt task force to deal with debt in Pennsylvania. Debt is something that is a huge problem. It's a problem at the state level, as well as at the federal level. Mostly what happens when we do budgets, we talk about our expenditures. We talk about what we're spending money on, and what money we're coming, what's coming in. But we never talk about what we owe, because it's such a big number, it's scary. So the Speaker, it's a big issue to the Speaker, so he appointed me because of my background in finance. In order to deal with that, we'll be having a press conference in the next couple of weeks, and you should read about it in the paper about how we're going to address debt. I'm also a deputy policy chair, which in the House, there's leaders, leaders, policy leader who sets policy for our caucus, the Republican caucus, and he has several deputies. I am one of those deputies. It's a leadership position. And one of the big things I've been working on there is something called a poverty initiative. I know a lot of people like to use stereotypes, especially when we're talking about Republicans, that Republicans don't care about this, or don't care about that. All they care about corporations. That's not true. Everybody, there's nobody in the world who doesn't care about the poor and need. How we address it may be differently. As deputy policy chair of dealing with the poverty initiative, my, I was tasked with how, how can we look at all the dollars we are spending, and make sure we get the biggest bang for our buck, essentially. So I have spent over a year going across the state, talking to faith-based organizations that deal with poverty, dealing with nonprofit organizations, Greater Pittsburgh Nonprofit Group, Pittsburgh Foundation, Campaign for What Works, all these different organizations, and trying to find out from them what works and what doesn't. And in the process of doing that, we figured out that nobody really measures their outcomes. What they measure is bodies. So let's say it's a food bank. I was talking to a lady who ran a food bank, it was outside of Harrisburg, I can't remember what city it was in. And I said, "How are you doing this year?" And she said, "Great, great. We took care of 200 and some families in the last three weeks. And last year, we only took care of 120 at the same timeframe." And I said, "That's not great. That may be failure, because we're not giving people out of poverty." And that should be the goal, is to use that money to get them out. Certainly, we want to help, but we want to provide them the tools necessary to get out of poverty. So what I've come, what I've worked with is the Pew Foundation for Research is working with me and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania now to measure outcomes. And they're, they're going to analyze every single program we have, and try and measure, essentially, a return on investment. How many dollars we put in, how many dollars it takes. And that information will then be shared with the General Assembly, so we can decide, not what programs to cut, but what programs to put more dollars into because we're getting a return on them. We got to that point early last year. I stepped out with the governor. Governor's on board. He's a great, so, you know, talk about walking, walking across the aisle. And you ask me about that all the time, when I work with the governor. We have worked together on this. He just approved it last week. I'll be rolling out the legislation for that shortly. So that's something that's been very important to me. I also got to check my notes so I don't forget anything. I'm also on the property tax reform task force. There's a group of 30 legislators, both Republicans and Democrats, that are working on how to deal with property tax. It may not be a big issue to all you, all you young adults, but go home and ask your moms and dads, it's a big issue. And how we deal with property taxes. Now, the governor has made a proposal in his budget, which we'll talk about a little bit later, but we also have our own proposal, and that's something I've, I've worked on. Also, I'm, I'm the chairman of the Reform Caucus. The big thing I heard when I've been running, every year I run, "You're all crooks. You're all criminals." And, and I go to, go to meetings with legislators, nobody, 30 legislators in a room, and I'll tell them all, "You're all crooks." That's what everybody thinks. Is it true? Sometimes, yeah, there are some individuals. But a black eye for one is a black eye for all. If one legislator does something wrong, we all be pinned with that same broad brush. So a couple of years ago, we formed something called Reform Caucus. The Reform Caucus is reform-minded legislators that are trying to change that. It is bipartisan, meaning, okay, kids, bipartisan. Democrats and Republicans. By camel, anybody?
House.
House and Senate. Who said it? Goldsberg?
Goldsberg, Mr. President.
So this is a group that is, House and Senate, Republicans and Democrats, 65 members, which is a pretty good, pretty good start out of the 252, 65 members are there. I am actually the chairman. And so our goal is to come up with legislation that starts changing the rules of how we, how we take care of ourselves, how we act. When you hear about verdiems, gifts, expenses, things like that, those are issues we deal with on the Reform Caucus. Aside from that, I also serve on standing committees. Standing committees that I serve on is the Gambling Overset Committee, that deals with gambling in the Commonwealth. I'm on State Government Committee that deals with, hi Jenna, I didn't see you sitting there. State Government Committee that deals with issues that, that we talked about, the Reform Caucus would come up with. I'm also on the Finance Committee that deals with dollars coming into the Commonwealth. And lastly, I'm on Appropriations, which is the big committee. It is the committee that deals with dollars going out of the Commonwealth, and deals with the budgets. So with that being said, of Appropriations, I segue into the budget, that is the biggest thing we do. On, every year, we pass a budget, hopefully on time. This year, it's a little bit different. This is the one thing you'll read about, all you young adults, this is the one thing you'll read about in the paper, again, and again, and again, and again, for the next few months. The budget, the state budget, the governor's proposed a state budget. What does it all mean? Last year, our budget was $29 billion. This year, the governor's proposing a budget of $33.6 billion. I say it's like Christmas at the Dunbar House. Christmas at the Dunbar House, Samantha and her three big sisters, on Christmas morning, all come rolling down the steps, looking under the Christmas tree, and see all the beautiful presents that someone's put under the tree. And they get a lot of nice stuff. And I'm standing back in the corner saying, "Oh crap, I got to pay for all this." That's what the governor's budget is. There's a lot of nice presents under the tree. A lot of things I like, a lot of things a lot of, a lot of you people will like as well. A lot of nice presents under the tree. The question is, how do we pay for it? How do we go from $29 billion to $33.6 billion? Projections of revenue for next year are $30.3 billion. We expect to have revenues coming in. The governor's proposed a $34 billion spending, so he has to raise taxes. Is that good? Is that bad? That's what we're here to do. That's what we're here today, to hear what your opinion is about, about that. He has proposed a $4.6 billion in tax increases. These tax increases are cigarettes, smoking tobacco, Marcella shell, sales tax, income tax, pretty much everything is getting a tax increase. Are you all willing to pay for those pretty presents under the tree? And, and, I heard enough. Every, and that's what I'd like to hear from all you today, is what your opinion is, is about that. He also has proposed increasing your personal income tax from 3.07% to 3.7%. Increasing sales tax from 6% to 6.6%, and increasing the breadth of sales tax, meaning things that are taxed and are not taxed now, will be taxed in the future. This is going to generate extra dollars to come into the Commonwealth. Part of that money, he's going to refund you in property tax reduction. He's going to ship money back to your home to reduce property tax. That's his property tax reduction plan. I don't know anybody in the legislature, I don't know one single legislator that is opposed to reducing your local property tax. It's just a question of how we go about doing it. The problem I have with the governor's proposal is this. The way he's going to allocate those funds back home isn't dollar for dollar. It isn't every dollar collected in Norman School District goes back to Norman School District. It's not every dollar that's collected in Penracker School District goes back to Penracker School District. In fact, out of the 500 school districts across the Commonwealth, 96 come out ahead. Some of them get their property tax eliminated completely. 404 school districts come out as losers. Norman School District, your increase in sales tax, your increase in personal income tax, minus what you give back, $11 million for Norman School District is going to go elsewhere in the Commonwealth. Penracker, same thing, $8 million that gets collected in Penracker School District will go to a different school district. I don't know, I'm against that because that dollar for dollar stay home. But some people can also say, "We need to make sure we're educating the kids in Philadelphia. We need to make sure we're educating the kids in Harrisburg. We need to make sure we're educating the kids in Alamo." I know Ed will tell you that, our, our difference in what we fund for higher-income schools and lower-income schools is a great disparity. The problem we have here is, how does the state, how does the state provide what we're looking to cast a purpose on? If you look at one of our most expensive school districts in the Commonwealth, North Allegheny, which is one of our wealthiest school districts, they get $3,000 per student from Pennsylvan. Philadelphia, $13,000, $14,000, absolutely provided. Should we reply them more is the question. And that's what the governor's asking us to do. The other, the other thing about the budget is, we are, our costs this year, coming into this year, we have what's called a structural deficit. Now, you could blame the prior governor, you could blame me, prior administration, for, for we don't have enough money. The structural deficit essentially is, we know we're going to have $30 billion in revenues, but we know our costs are already higher than $30, $30. Even though we only spent $29 billion last year, costs go up every year. Most notably pension costs, which I know Jack has taken on that. But our pension costs are, are going up higher and higher and higher, and this year, it's going to be close to $8.6 billion in pension costs. So how do we deal with that? The governor's answer is, take pensions and put them in a box. Take them out of the general fund. Don't have it. I'll show you. This is actually the Commonwealth's budget. This is actually what the budget looks like, page after page, line after line. He wants to take pensions off of here and just put it in a different fund, which is fine. Every year when we do the budget, that's all anybody looks at. He's taking out, he's putting it over there with the debt I talked about earlier, that nobody talks about. Everybody seems to forget about that. He wants to fund a pension with pension obligation bonds. Which may sound like a good idea. Let's go borrow $3 billion and pay the pension. Problem is, you're going to pay pension obligation bonds back. And he wants to pay for the pension obligation bonds with liquor, with liquor stores. Essentially, modernizing the liquor stores. Problem I have is, our liquor stores provide $80 billion a year to the Commonwealth. He needs $172 billion to make that debt obligation, that pension obligation bond payment. He says modernization will get us to $140 billion. I don't know where the other $32 billion is coming from. So I do appreciate that he is, or at least has a plan. He has a plan. I don't agree entirely with the plan now. Other cause factors that are driving our budget, the biggest, the biggest increases, the presents under the tree. Those presents under the tree, most notably, education. $400 million more for basic debt. That's for all you guys in high school. $400 million more for the Commonwealth. Good thing. Good thing. $100 million more for pre-camp. There's, there's, there's people on either side of pre-camp. Is pre-camp work? I, I do support pre-camp. I don't know if I support doubling the funding, but I do support pre-camp. $100 million more for pre-camp. $100 million more for special aid. These are all nice presents under the tree. Can't we afford them? Are we willing to pay more tax to get, to have them? There are some things on the budget I do object to. He has a 40% increase in BCD, which is part of the Community Economic Development, which is essentially throwing $80 million more into just having people give out grant dollars. Now, I know the firemen may like some of that. Some of the local municipalities may like to have some of that money. But it's so discretionary that I'd rather see that money used elsewhere. I'd rather see that money in DEP, because DEP tells maybe more people to, to regulate. So. That's the biggest things going on with the budget. The only other, the only other things we can talk, I can talk about, because I said I was going to talk for 15 minutes, I'm at 15 minutes. I can talk about legislation I've worked on, legislation I passed, legislation I'm going to pass, but I'd rather hear from all you. So this is where you just got to start getting all your extra credit points for asking questions. So any questions, and understand, a question, any question on any subject is fine. We're not limited to one area. This is being live, livestreamed, at least I hope it is being livestreamed.
It's Dilly tells me he can hear everything. So we at least have that going.
So it is being livestreamed. So there are a lot of students from Penracker that are home watching, all the people at Penracker, and they have the ability to send me questions. Lisa, do you want to announce how they have to send me questions? Because we will take live questions, and we will send questions over the Internet.
Sure. We are checking all of the sources. You can submit questions through yourcalltownhall@gmail.com. And your call town hall is all one word, no capital letters, or spaces, or periods. We also have a Twitter feed going, which is the at symbol, RepDunbar, R-E-P-D-U-N-B-A-R. And then, of course, there's always Facebook. If you just, you know, go to our Facebook page, you can submit questions there also.
Okay. And we'll let you start off, if you have questions, you want to start, any questions in the area?
Okay. Well, the first question that we have is, why does the governor want to take money away from charter schools?
Well, in, in all honesty, there is, the way charter schools are funded, every school district, like Norman School District, they submit their expenditures on what it costs them to educate each kid. There's certain things that go into that calculation, and try and calculate what it costs per kid. So if a kid decides not to go to Norman School and go to a charter school, Norman hasn't paid that charter school whatever that calculation is. Part of the problem is that the calculation includes things like transportation. If it's a cyber school, the kid's not being transported. And then it includes lunches and things like that, where it's a cyber school, we're not being transferred. There is a proposal with H.B. 530, which is Representative Reese's bill, Representative Reese's from Ligonier, and his bill tries to balance it out. What, what has happened over the years is, the pendulum for funding has been tilted two parts around cyber charter and charter schools. They try to push that pendulum back to the center to make it fair and equitable. His proposal essentially is going to take, I think it's like $60 million away from charter schools and give it back to basic public schools. The governor would like to see it be a little bit more. I don't, you know, the governors would push the pendulum a little bit too far towards the public schools and away from the charter schools. That's a matter of opinion about whether you feel that's good or not. All my kids gone to public school. All my kids have always gone to public school. I think they've gotten excellent education, so far.
Yeah.
So far, so good. So I, I normally would default to, to the public schools. Yes, sir.
Just curious, if the last Penracker school meeting I was able to attend, over three mils of tax, the Penracker taxpayers goes to charter schools.
Yeah.
Which amounts to almost $1 million a year. And I think that maybe some kids in Penracker could use that million for other programs.
Yeah. And I'm not going to disagree. It's a question, I don't know how many kids are in charter schools out of Penracker, if I could get that information. And if our cost, if our school district cost would go higher with those kids were there, I, I don't know. If, if, you know, if those kids all stayed back in Penracker, would we need, you know, that million dollars? Would that be enough to cover all their costs? I, that's why we're trying to balance that pendulum, to make it a, a fair and equitable number. Other question? Yes?
Fairly, for a minute. It's been news lately that some states can pass a law to help reinforce one of the rights guaranteed by the president. That right being freedom of religion. These laws have been claimed to have some discriminatory, particularly towards homosexuals. And as such, change. How do you feel about these three points? One, the ability to not deny service based on religious belief. Two, homosexual marriage. And three, discrimination against anyone in general.
Okay. First off, what he's referring to, if anybody's sitting here, he was asking, let's put it this way, the Indiana law that was recently, recently approved in Indiana, Pennsylvania has, has a law very similar to that, I don't know if you all know that or not, that you can't deny. A religious organization can't deny. Somebody can't deny. But a corporation cannot. A business cannot. A business cannot say, "I don't want your business because you're gay," or "I don't want your business because you're..." Whatever classification that they might strike down. That is our law right now. If you're a corporation, you cannot do that, but a religious organization can. I don't really have a major problem with a religious organization being able to limit their amount of people that are for taking, but a corporation, business, certainly cannot. The anti-discrimination, anti-discrimination going in Pennsylvania is H.B. 300. At least it was last year. H.B. 300, but let's be honest. First off, I'm a state rep. I'm not going to stand up here and tell you that it's all right to discriminate against anybody. You can't discriminate against anybody. I don't care what race, color, creed, sexual orientation. I don't care what else. You can't be discriminated against anybody. If H.B. 300 can get worded in that manner, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. So one of the issues with H.B. 300 is they're trying to add on protective classes, and identify additional protective classes for future benefit, for whatever reason. And that's what we're just trying to work out the wording. That's a bill I should pass, though. The last question, the one question about gay marriage. I, Samantha will tell you, "I've been married to mommy for 29 years. I'm about half a married man as you can find. I'm also Catholic. I also believe a marriage is between a man and a woman. I do believe that, that marriage is between a man and a woman." I have no problem with this sort of meeting. Is that different? Is that, you tell me. Is that, is that, is that acceptable?
The wording?
Yes. It's a matter of semantics. It's really a matter of semantics.
Are you suggesting that one group of people get married and the other people, they just have a different word?
No. They have a different word, but they have all the same rights. They have all the same rights.
But I mean, it's the same thing.
See, I, I understand. I, I was brought up Catholic. I was brought up with the sacraments. Communion, marriage, confirmation, all the different sacraments. So to me, marriage is, in the American acumen, is between a man and a woman. Call it a civil union. And I'll be honest with you, Republicans, supposedly Republicans, their mantra is, less government, less government interference. I don't care where anybody goes in the world. I really don't. Someone may disagree. Chuck, you agree, disagree? I mean, you may not agree with me on that.
This is a lot of, because we're, 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 we're a state rep, so I'm just going to see if you're in line.
Okay.
I, I, yes, sir. Something to be said before, and I've experienced a lot of politics in my life that saw that goes up for their side. And in order to make money for your establishment, this idea of cutting taxes, austerity creates more of austerity. Trying to come down like Roosevelt, just like you, whatever he did, I liked. History proved him to be the greatest individual we've had in this country. He taught, he didn't even have a history, he wasn't the right to develop a Roosevelt. And this idea of cutting spending, industry and companies can't convince enough jobs to keep everyone working. It's up to government to negotiate or have a program or something for people's work if everyone's employed. You wouldn't need unemployment, you wouldn't need food stamps, you wouldn't need whatever. This, this country's been a black cell. If, if they continue down this path of, you have, of the wealthy who are, you know, poor, you eliminate the middle class. You have to have a good middle class. If there's certain people that either can't find work or whatever, if you can't, can't work for you, then this whole concept of pulling down this path is, is going to destroy the country. It, it's just insane to try to pursue, cut taxes, cut this, cut that. You, you have to have a middle of the road theology. And if, if your two left tires are in the firm of the road, going down the highway, if you're, if you're, if you're right, they're, they're off under the firm, going down the highway. You have to be in the middle of the road. You can't be on the left, and you can't be on...
Hey, Andy, let me, let me say this. I, I mean, I don't agree with everything you said, certainly, but there, there is some, there is some truth to the matter that we, as a government, both at the state level and the federal level, we've become too polarized. We've become far too polarized. We've become, we've become so polarized that we can't get anything done. We don't get anything done the last four years in the House. And when Republicans were the governor, we sent it in the House, and we still didn't get anything done. Because certain factions within that group were so polarized, it led to the whole group down. We do, we do need more sense of thought about it. That's why, and if you, if any of y'all have the chance, or really bored one night, or dry, can't go to sleep, or something like that, go, go to my website, RepDunbar.com, and look at some of the videos for the last, the last three weeks of appropriation here. And look at the one where I sit at the Budget Secretary. And I said to him, and he keeps telling me about the budget, the budget, the budget is a whole list. The budget is a big and all-encompassing thing. And I'm like, "Does that mean there's no room for compromise? That there is no room for discussion?" And he said, "Well, you have to look at it as a whole." I said, "I am looking at it, and there's parts of it I like. There's parts of it I don't like, though." And we, we need to sit down. Now, Governor Wolf has, Governor Wolf, in his defense, has said repeatedly that he's willing to compromise. Let's hope that is the case. I don't know if you ever had a question there, but...
But I think on that, you, you have to spend money to make, the more you cut, the more austerity you're going to have in, in the whole country, for the, you're going to have a recession for thirty years.
And, and spending has gone up. When I got to the House, our budget was, our first budget was $26 billion. Our fourth budget was $29 billion. What I would like to see personally, my own opinion, and you can disagree with me if you like him, what I would like to see is our spending at least stay within the limits of inflation. Because that's a realistic approach, that if everybody gets raises on an inflationary raise, that's how much more taxes we're going to get without raising anybody's taxes. So if you made $10,000, we're going to, we're going to get you $300. You know, if you made $11,000, we're going to get you $330, to say this. So on, and that's how our spending will increase, based upon what, what your increases are. Let me just get a couple off the computer here, Mike.
Why do some counties in Pennsylvania have emissions testing, but not all of them?
That was based on, uh, studies years ago that the EPA mandated quality control, uh, as far as western Pennsylvania, western Pennsylvania has lumped into an area that spreads from all the way down to the Panhandle of West Virginia, all the way north past Butler. Uh, our area is considered a, uh, a high-risk area for air pollution. So the EPA mandated that we had to reduce the level of emissions in our, in our, in western PA. That's why we have summer blend gas. In summertime, our gas costs about 15, 16 cents more a gallon than it does in Harrisburg. Because we're under the EPA mandate. Uh, along the same lines, we have to have our cars tested through emission standards to make sure they're not emitting pollutants into the air. Now, when that was passed, I won't argue with the reason, when that was passed, it was a good reason. But I tell you now, I haven't seen a car fail. I, I don't know what it is, but I heard the number was 99.7 or 99.8% of the cars passed, and most of the tests is as much as getting in your car, turning it on, and making sure that little check engine light doesn't come on. And we're gonna charge you whatever the station charges you to put that emission sticker on. It's outlive its usefulness. I don't have a problem with, with summer blend gas, I'm sorry, so we can get EPA approval that our emissions are lower and everything like that. But emissions testing is something that has gone by the wayside. The way cars are designed today, it's not a big, it's not as big a deal as it was in the past. I did, uh, two years ago, or a year and a half ago, I don't know if any of you recall, Governor Corbin proposed a gas tax increase for our roads and bridges. Uh, I was opposed. I was opposed to dollars coming out of our districts and going to mass transit in Philadelphia and Alachua County. I told him I was a no vote. And he said, well, I need to make you a yes vote. So, get rid of the emissions testing, get rid of the emissions testing for western county, as well as some other things. He actually agreed. He actually agreed, and so I'll talk, and then he said, "How do I do that?" And I said, "Look, I'm not the governor, you are." And so, he actually, the Secretary of Transportation and the new Secretary of Transportation, I talked to her about it as well, said they're talking to the EPA about having this standard for, we'll keep our fingers crossed. I don't know how long it's gonna be. I, Mike was waiting. Good, Mike, thank you for your patience.
No problem. So, it sounds like you're in the mood to compromise yourself.
Certainly. I, you know, it, it's a simple issue is...
Does that mean that you're agreeing that revenues need to be increased somewhere, somehow?
Our revenues are sitting at 30.3. That's our projected. That doesn't cover enough. That doesn't cover what, what, what our costs are gonna be, what our structural deficits is. We have to at least produce some revenues. There are alternatives, and that's where the disagreement lies. Yes? To answer your question, yes.
Okay. So, what are your solutions then? Where do you wanna increase revenue?
Started with privatization liquor stores. To me, it's a no-brainer. And I know you disagree, but that's probably where we're all gonna disagree. Let me finish. Let me finish. Privatization of liquor stores. If we, right now, we're only two states in the country that run around liquor stores. Us and Utah. I don't know how we got the scent double Utah. Well, we are. I don't think we have a, too many Mormons that fit on it, too. We sell the liquor stores. Essentially, all we're talking about doing is, first off, convenience of customers. I don't know, I drink beer. I've been to it. Samantha would have told on me if I said I did. I drink beer. Why can't I just go to the store and get a beer? Why can't I go and get a six pack at, at, you know, whenever I'm shopping? Don't laugh, I, I never shop, but... Secondly, whoever sells liquor, why does the state do it when private industry is willing to do it? And they're willing to pay for the license. Estimates are close to $1 billion can be brought in over the course of two years for the purchase of these liquor licenses.
What happens after that?
What happens after that?
Yeah, so, is there more money that's going to be generated up and up?
The, the estimates...
The initial...
The estimates, the estimates are that there not only will be an increase with the license fees, but there also will be an increase in taxation. Because what happens right now is all our border counties, all our border, everywhere along the Maryland border, Delaware border, the largest selling liquor stores in the country are just across the border from Pennsylvania and Maryland and Delaware. How about this say, it's, it's a earth-shattering amount of money, Mike? But it would be other revenues. So we're, but this is like a three-year process of a billion dollars.
Okay, move on to what, what are your other revenues? Thank you.
Internet gaming is my second choice. That's my second. Presently in Pennsylvania, any, any of you young men and women, I don't know if it's still popular, have you guys played poker online? Anybody ever play poker online?
It's bad. Do you guys play poker online?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I, I, right now, right now in Pennsylvania, you can play poker online, it's legal. You can play poker online, but you're playing on offshore accounts in Delaware, and the money's going out, out of Pennsylvania. Our casinos want internet gaming. Our casinos would like to have internet gaming. They would like to offer it. The estimates of that are anywhere from $200 million, and we are offering additional revenues. That's a process that has to get legislation passed. It's not easy. It's not, it's not a slam dunk. But, and, and that would be considered, correct?
What else?
That's happening, right? They got more examples than that.
So, this proposal that we're gonna be rolling out in a couple of weeks, I guess it is, the alternative to Governor Wolf's budget, is gonna include these two?
I don't know that. This is my personal opinion. I thought you asked my personal opinion.
Okay, well, I was asking your opinion and then also what do you expect to see?
I, and I'm on appropriations. So you understand, I am on appropriations, so I am in the room. We have just concluded our hearings with our secretaries. We just concluded them last week. At this point in time, we're trying to, they're just starting negotiations for the governor's office just this week. The governor in the paper said, "Budget's not gonna get done on time." I don't know why he would say that, but it's kind of premature. It's April 9th. Budget's not gonna be until June 30th. I hate to start saying we're not gonna get something accomplished before we even try. Uh, hopefully we can find a little ground. There's gonna be a give and take. If you, if you wanna know specifics, I think there'll be trade-offs. I don't know specifically, I think there'll be trade-offs. I think we'll ask for pension reform. I think we'll ask for pension reform. I think the governor will ask for Marcellus shell tax. I think they both can happen. I think they both have votes.
You vote for that?
Marcellus shell tax? It depends on how structured. I will not, will not vote for Marcellus shell tax if it eradicates the, the impacty dollar. Impacty dollars are very important, wasn't it, Tom? Very important? Yes?
Uh, it's not, wasn't my original question, but in front of a couple of points, and I'm gonna make some comments on, on this particular issue. First of all, privatizing, we're gonna replace, oh, I think there's about a thousand state employees that work for this system? I'm not positive on that.
It's not that many.
Um, then you will be replacing those jobs with minimum wage jobs at national park. Probably make a difference social part of the world.
Most jobs, part of the bill that we passed, part of the bill that we passed, actually has tax credits presented for, for license, key to for, 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 for.
Okay, because, I mean, eventually, eventually, there'll be minimum wage jobs. We're also gonna have a nation with kids selling to kids. You have space market, who has good wage jobs that don't wanna be set jobs, they're very, very careful who they sell to. You privatize that, you're gonna have kids selling to kids.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing, but I will say this, Mike. A licensing, biggest investment they have is that license itself. They are not looking jeopardizing that license. We're not.
Is that gonna replace that whole, I believe you said $80 million revenue?
$80 million?
Is that gonna replace that whole entire amount?
In all honesty...
Because that looks like a one-time shot.
Yeah, in all honesty, that $80 million a year is not gonna be there in two years. Their projection, this is from the LCP directly, and again, you can look at my website, when I talk to the LCP and appropriations here, their projections, their own projections, they provided me a revenue increase of 4% every year. Plus increases of 6.5% every year. So every year, their margin shrinks about 7.5%. In two years, they no longer will be able to provide $80 million. It's gonna be more like $26 million. In four years, it's gone. They're not gonna be providing anything other than a tax. That's, that's their own, that, I, I mean...
I'm not certain I agree with that.
I can show you.
It's going to be a profit from now, obviously. With the law, it's a purchase of a...
I, I can provide it, I can provide you the schedule they gave me.
That wasn't what I came here to talk about. That's what I wanted to thank you for, but nonetheless, I think those are all valid things that need to be considered when you make that decision. Um, there is no, and another part, it's part of that, is there's zero tax on smoking products?
That's right.
Is that something that you think that's going to happen?
I can vote for it.
That would bring a, a bit of revenue in there.
I, I can vote for it. I, I'm...
I think the young citizens with cancer need to smoke this tobacco for this decision. Um, the question that I actually wanted to mainly ask you is, um, probably in about 10 minutes, the, um, zone for the Penn Township will be making a decision on a unconventional Marcellus supply shell. There's going to be 600, 500 feet from the oil and gas site. I wanna know if you feel that's an adequate setback from such a facility with such an industrial process that we still have a lot of unanswered questions about the same thing?
And, and I've spoken to Shavon earlier, and, and I will not, I don't hide, I do support the issue.
I know, but that's why I asked you a question.
I don't, I don't, yeah. I don't, I don't hide from where I'm at in supporting industry. And when Act 13, for, Act 13 was the gas and oil mill that came to the House a few years ago. And it essentially, what it did was it established statewide rules, presumed. It established what setback should be, it established all the different rules and regulations for Marcellus. And it essentially said that you as a Penn Township Commissioner, you as a man of row of councilmen, you no longer have a state. The state's gonna tell you what to do. I voted no because of that. I actually don't trust it, the governor wouldn't have been happy with me on that, that's why. I've been angry a few times. But I voted no because I believe in local control. I believe that a local municipality should decide what's best for its own residents. I come from local, I was a Penn Township Commissioner. I, and I believe that they should make the decision. So I fought hard, I lost. Act 13 got passed. Supreme Court actually came along afterwards and said, "No, you can't do that." Which Supreme Court was right at this time.
And I'm gonna go about the same...
I'm getting to it. I'm getting, I just wanna get the background from everybody else. That being said, I firmly stand behind whatever decision, and I told the Penn Township Commissioners, whatever you decide, I stand behind you. If you say 200, if you say 1,000, if you say 500, it's your call. Personally, say something plus. Say something plus. Can the state make its own rules? Obviously not. Supreme Court is shot out of town. Can the local municipality say 1,000 feet? Yes. Do they run the risk of ending up in court? Certainly. Certainly. If I was a Penn Township Commissioner, if I still was a Penn Township Commissioner, to be honest with you, I probably would have voted to obey their 600 feet, I believe. I still trust them. I still break trust. But I probably would have voted to obey it. Governor, 600? Yeah.
And the nursing home, I carry, the first, the evacuation, it's just one to five.
Well, I would certainly, I would certainly hope that, as I go through zoning process of, 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 of,[1432.25]
If, uh, Hemphill doesn't want it, they don't get that revenue.
They will, so, as a neighbor.
The way I think of Harrisburg, Harrisburg.
Yeah. Well, no, no, they do get a portion of it. The impact fee comes in, it's a per wellhead charge, they get charged per wellhead, they charge, they get charged a certain fee. A portion of that money gets scraped off the top and stays in Harrisburg. A portion of it gets scraped off the top and gets Harrisburg.
Today?
Yes, today. A portion of it does stay there.
My question was down on the beach, obviously I don't understand the way things are, but that notwithstanding, uh, this new governor, he wants to change that and have all that, all that.
Yes, you are, you are, you do understand it.
Why, why, why would anybody in their right mind about it? Who, why would Harrisburg know better than the local?
Well, first off, first off, well, Harrisburg know better. Secondly, if I'm in the southeast of Pennsylvania, and if you look at a map of Pennsylvania and you look at the Marcellus play, it kind of comes up at an angle across. The southeast of Pennsylvania where a lot of our residents live, don't have any Marcellus plays. So they don't get any impact fee dollars. They should. All right, that's fine, I agree with you. Because they're not getting my impact fee dollars. But Pennsylvania House of Representatives are based on, everybody represents 62,000 people. So there's a lot of representatives from the Philadelphia, the southeast area that want those dollars, so that's why there's a fight. Now, I will say this much, the governor's proposed an extraction tax. I believe it's going to pass. I do believe it's going to pass. Ultimately, it's going to pass in some shape or form. I just don't know how, and what I want to ensure is that we are at least getting our impact fees our way first. Let me get a computer quick.
Uh, what is the most important issue for the debt task force? And what do you think is the most important issue for the debt task force?
Oh, the debt task force, which I mentioned at the beginning, the problem is, we have, uh, I'm an accountant. Any kids take a county class? County class. You know what a balance sheet is? Know what an income statement is? An income statement, you have your revenues coming in and your expenditures going out. That's how we do our budgets. Revenues coming in, expenditures going out. The balance sheet also shows your debt. Shows what you owe. Shows what people owe you. In Pennsylvania, when we do a budget, all we do is look at the income statement, we never look at the balance sheet. And the problem is, is that debt is over 1 million. Our pension liability is upwards of $60 billion. We owe $60 billion. That's us pensions. I told you what our total revenue is for next year going to be. $30 billion. If we didn't spend a penny on nothing else, if we didn't have police, if we didn't have anything, then we have nothing. It would still take two years to pay off the pension. So it's the 800 pound rule in the back of the room that no one wants, no one seems to want to deal with. But every year, on top of the pension, on top of the pension, uh, bubble that we have and pension deficit that we have, we also borrow more money every single year. Every single year, we have a debt authorization act that we authorize the governor to borrow money. In that debt authorization act is a bunch of, bunch of projects called RCAP. RCAP, regional, something around it, some acronym that I don't even know what it is, but it's a, these are just projects the governor can pick and fund the paper. A billion dollars a year. I don't know if anybody remembers, I'm sure Chuck will remember, about five, six years ago, there was a big deal about the budget and we built the Allen Specter Library for $10 million. And we built something else for Jack Murtha for $5 million. We just borrowed money to do it, and it's all right because he never showed up. So the biggest issue for the debt, the debt task force that I'm working on is transparency, that these projects have to be done, they have to be identified. You have to say what every project is, how much it's going to cost, and how long the project's going to take to complete. Because the problem we have is most projects don't get done in one year. So you borrow money one year and you start a project. You cannot not finish it. You can't do a project pathwise, you've got to borrow money again the next year. So every year when we go to vote on debt authorization act, we get told, this is what we're told, oh, we got to finish this project. Well, yeah, sure you do. My bill and my action on the debt task force, it's, I tell, tell me how much. Tell me how much has to go to finish old projects. Tell me how much is for new projects. Tell me the ten, the duration of all these projects. Let's spell it all out, let's have transparency. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Um, I know you support the, uh, gas industry, but I know a lot of people such as myself and others are concerned about, uh, the availability of, uh, renewable resources over the coming years, but, uh, the environment that they have. What is Pennsylvania doing for renewable energy?
Uh, the governor is, yeah, the governor is, in the past, we, we offered a lot of tax credits in renewable energy bills. We offer tax credits for people, solar powers, solar, solar panels, wind power, we offered all kinds of tax credits and tax incentives. That's what proved that that's not a good way of doing business, to tell you the truth. Pick and choose winners and losers. The governor's proposed actual dollars for the industry itself to help jumpstart the industry within Pennsylvania. It's in his current budget proposal. It's not, it's not a whole lot of money, it really isn't. Uh, Pennsylvania isn't a great source for somebody's, it's really our job, it doesn't, uh, allow us to have wind power, the sun never shines.
Certainly doesn't today.
So somebody seems so hard, but we do have other alternatives in Pennsylvania. There's water, which we can get a lot of production through water. And, and he's been, he was marching dollars towards that area. And what, I don't know, those people, to tell you the truth, I don't know if Pennsylvania's ever going to be a nuclear accident. As much as there are.
How do you support the power?
I support the nuclear industry, I always have. Uh, we have, it's in Washington, PA, we have an electricity power plant, which there's a lot of individuals in my district that actually work at Home Community. I've been there, I'm a city. Now, I will say this much, they have spent millions, millions and millions of dollars to scrub, to scrub the air essentially.
$5 million to buy an air scrubber.
And new EPA standards could actually force them to buy another one. So it's, it's very heavily regulated, it's very tough, but I think our knowledge, it's an industry that has, that's shown that it's willing to be environmentally conscious. Well, I understand, you're working coal. You're starting coal over there too. But it's a nuclear industry.
I support the nuclear industry. I'm a nuclear inspector that's over in, I think in the city of Worcester.
Cool.
So, um, I'm a nuclear inspector, young with a certificate. So, just young with a certificate, we went down to ask them.
Cool.
So I don't know what you think, you know, taking the responsibility for unemployment compensation, especially if you're not 5%.
I'm sorry, the last six?
40, 5%.
Okay, here's another one, whatever, uh, unemployment comp, unemployment compensation law was changed two years ago, two years ago. And it had, it was a rule that said if you earn more than 45% of your wages in one quarter in one three month period, you can't get out of the job. If you earn more than, more than half your money in a quarter of the year, you are not eligible for unemployment. Now, the idea behind that, the idea behind that was that individuals, they felt individuals were, were construction, mostly if that's construction industry more than anything else, were in construction. And they would work, and they would work overtime, and they would work all these hours during summer months, and then they wouldn't try and work in the other months and were just, let's say, sucking off the system to, to be nice. So that's why the rule is. We asked, just, uh, two weeks ago, Secretary Labor and Industry, we, we discussed this with federal, we discussed unemployment compensation trust fund. The reason why that bill was passed originally was the trust fund was almost gone. There almost wasn't any money in it to pay unemployment compensation class. So we had to make drastic change. And that wasn't drastic change. We asked her to tell us how many individuals we're going to find out of this, so we know whether we need to change it. We asked her how the health of the trust fund is, which is now actually very fluid. We asked her when we can no longer have money withheld out of employees' checks. Many of you guys get paid here, it's like 200, 0007, the amount out of your check. It's a little bit of money, but it matters a whole lot. But that deals the unemployment trust fund. We want to stop that from coming out of people's pays as well. Reason why we can get to that point, Pennsylvania says lowest unemployment rate in over a decade. Over a decade, lowest unemployment rate. Five, two, five, one, we were last month, I think we're slightly higher this month, I think we're at five, three this month. So unemployment claims are down. There's more money in the trust fund. So these things are certainly, we're trying to address it, it actually, we're trying to figure out a way to just eliminate that completely or not. So that's a very good question.
The governor says that he supports a community comparison program, and that's probably us, that's probably your group.
How does that, how does our comparison program? How, do you, do you work seasonal though, or?
I didn't. I don't know.
Okay. Uh, it is, it is, Andy, I'm just trying to get a couple more out of the question.
I want you to stay out of the weeds, because I'm making a lot of money out of it now.
Yeah. And so what, what's your career path?
I'm a nuclear inspector.
Yeah, but I mean, what, where would you work?
I work in essence, more than, go back down.
Okay, very good.
For November City, we work on a lot, and work for their plants. School, law school.
No, it is, it is a very good question, I did, it is a question that we, we did, well, first off, with actually the trust fund is solved, which apparently is. So I, I assume you will see legislation coming out, you will. I, I almost promised you, I'll tell you. Please, sir.
What is the state going to try to do and combat the shrinking number of volunteer firefighters statewide? Is anyone talking about this issue now before it becomes a statewide epidemic? What ideas are being talked about, if any?
Yeah, that's a good question, whoever asked it, probably.
Someone you know.
Well, is it really?
Yes.
Then you might, you might want to say, you know, that, I'm kidding. Uh, this is, this is an issue that is a really, especially in my district, my district, which is the 56th, which I have Manor Trafford, Penthouse, North Huntington, Irland, and North Irland, all volunteers. These, these individuals like Mike Cecil, the doctor's a good friend of mine, like, 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 like players from our department. These individuals give up their time, their energy, and they save us so much in tax dollars. And don't ask for anything in return, get very little in return. Get very little from the state. What do you give the state? 15,000 a year, something like that? 40,000? I'm sorry? 40,000, 20,000. They run a whole fire department. Self, they, they, they were, and the problem we have is, it used to be, years ago, years ago, our fire departments were the heart of our townships. That's where everybody went to, that's where everybody hung out, and everybody was a member, and their kids were members. So they always had enough people. How's your husband, are you all right, or? 20. All the players, 20. I'm going to have a hold of them. I, I'll hold them. What we need to do is, we need to find the young people, get you involved in our volunteer fire companies, and we got to find ways to do it. And sometimes you need to hold that carrot out in front of them. Whatever little carrot you can hold out in front of them. We have, we have legislation proposed to reduction in college tuition by our state system schools. We have legislation proposed to give tax credits, local tax credits, not state tax, but local tax. So if you are a volunteer fireman in Penn Trafford, we can say, you don't have to pay that 1% local income tax. We've proposed it, they're out there, they're talked about. We're also proposing, and Mike can, Mike can tell you this, training is really hard. These, these guys, they're not just guys that walk in and put on this, the hat and say, I'm a fireman. They got to go through a long train. And that train costs money. You have to pay for it yourself, or it's a department, or a department takes for it. But it takes a lot of time, and they got to go to classes. So another proposal we have is, is, is changing the training to online training, where you can sit in the fire department and actually do the training right there at no cost.
So hopefully that answers the question, whoever that friend of mine posed, like.
Jack, if you want to ask? Uh, I have a very small question. We're, we're talking about hundreds of millions and billions of dollars. I've got a little small one, but I think it affects the youngster in the room there. I think in schools, we now have an epidemic, long threats, fire alarms, and so forth. It is ridiculous, it is absurd. And what's happening is, people who are doing this, whether it's a sixth grader, a ninth grader, or a senior, it doesn't feel like doing it. It's a prank. Ha, ha, ha. What they don't realize is what they're doing to that school, to that debt. You have 15, 16, 17 people that are going to be paid for the beach, and they're trying to handle chaos. You have local firemen leaving their houses, leaving their pillows, jumping out or drop the load at that school. You have your local first responders, you have your local police who are giving up hours of their time when they could have been doing something else, because one person says, ha, 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 I'm going to do this. So I don't want to get into the details, but I, I presented, uh, Mr. Dunbar before the meeting, uh, but I think it should be a new statewide law for any type of false alarm threat, uh, fire alarm, destroying surveillance cameras, and so forth. It would be strict, it would be firm, it would cost you money, there would be a stiff fine. If you're an adult, 18 years and over, the fine is higher. If you're a minor, 17 years and younger, the fine is lower. Fine is, fine is lower. But regardless, if you are caught, statewide law, you lose your driver's license for one year. And if you don't have a license, then you have to wait an additional year to get that license, uh, because you thought it was a fine time. It's not a long train, it's costing a lot of grief, and billions of dollars of wasted employee time. So I hope.
Okay, here's, I got a stack, Jack, who presented that to me. And understand, the best ideas come from you. Bills I write, I have four, five, nine in the law, I have.
Six out there right now?
I think six.
The bills I do come with ideas like this. Now, before I go anywhere with them, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say. Jack had presented this to me, and he said, well, I, I would say, I don't want to say it at the town hall, but I said, no, this isn't the time to say it. What are you kids thinking? Risk, risk of losing your license for a year enough of a deterrent to stop that from happening? You believe, what do you think? Yes.
Someone thinks that there is a genuine concern, if, like, if they're not 100% sure of concern, they might not feel like they should report it.
Do you? I don't know, how many did you have at, at PT in Norman, go on to us? One in PT. Do you have any in Norman?
Yeah.
One?
There have been multiple, um, things happening at the middle school now. Um, I know my brother is in the second grade, and he, he get emails home whenever they run for a PD. I know that, I think last week, there was actually a threat that they were going to bring the night to school. And that was especially poignant, given what happened today last year.
Yeah, which, it reminds me, I don't remember, today's April 9th of the year since Franklin B. Jones. Uh, I mean, Jack proposes to me, and I'm like, I don't know, you know, you know, do kids, you know, do you even know who does it? Are you able to catch the people that do it? Does everybody talk? Yes.
Well, I feel like us here, we're, if we're willing to take the time to come to the town hall meeting, we're not going to be the ones putting out the bomb threat.
Probably not.
So it's hard to relate to that situation. But I feel, I feel like in that situation, those kids obviously don't care that much in losing their license for one year, so they'll just drive without one. I think they really wouldn't be worried.
You may be right, you may be, you may be right. What about a punitive damage as far as fine of $1,000, I think that's what you're doing?
Or a 17 and under $1,000 fine, 18 and over $2,000 fine.
I, I personally don't, I don't, you better not have him put in a, this will be a lot more damage than $1,000. But I don't know if I can, I don't know, I don't know mentality for somebody that does that. I really don't, so it's hard. Yes, sir.
I feel like, I can understand maybe from like an adult standpoint, it's just the people that they're doing, but maybe not someone that's strict, and he can't just fine them and just let it go. I think that someone that does a bomb threat or brings the night to school, obviously there's something psychological that they need help with, so we can't just label them as trying to make a laugh and everything. I feel like if we're into something like that, we should have something else with it that after, they can help them with that kind of problem.
Here, Mr. Tucker. You want to run the right of bill, or what?
Is that? Once you do, so we're going. Very pleased with your thought.
I feel like the rest is, like, monitoring them generally hurt people otherwise, you would never see people getting arrested for DUI. It's the same, it's almost the same thing, a little bit different, but just because you slap a fine on something and you take away someone like for a bribe or death, they don't necessarily, it doesn't stop them doing it. Like you were saying, you probably do more of the mental health issue to focus on rather than just fineing people.
So what would you suggest then?
Actually, say, give us help with people that do these things. Bring them, bring the nights to school and bring them.
So, 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 you know what, one thing I realized today, if Mr. Pena in Norman was probably really up high on the wall because you're a ninth grade bowling ball team miss, juh. My daughter, you gotta stand up, stand up. This is, this is my baby, this is my baby. He's as tall as I am. Their whole team is taller than us. So there's a tall kid.
George, another thing I want to bring up, uh, Jack's proposal and some of the thoughts here. I think everybody needs to keep in mind that when these things happen, you have X number of first responders, whether it be police, fire, or paramedic, responding to that school or that institution. Now, at the same time, there could be a half a dozen other things coming at the same time, that those valuable resources are being sent somewhere unnecessarily. And those couple of minutes' time could mean the difference between life or death for somebody. So I, I think Jack, you know, has a valid point, I think we need to keep that in mind. So you have to, you have to treat the whole scope, not just part.
I see what you're saying, like, the, it costs money, I see that. But I feel like if we focus on the mental health of fixing these people, we're not going to have as much. I mean, I know that everyone, I don't think that any of us would do anything like that, but if we focus on bringing more mental health into health classes at school and really taking seriously, you know, showing them the video and expecting them to just get it, I think.
How much does it need to cost?
I think something that would be important in that is just thinking about how we would actually apprehend those people, like, catch them. Because they often, oftentimes, they don't know who actually did it. It's kind of like the fine littering. If there's someone who's got litters, how are you, how are you going to say that litter was yours unless you catch them right away? It's like one of those things where, how are you going to do that? Like, what policy, like, how are you going to say, well, this person is definitely the person who did it, and then fine them, you know?
I will say this much. And, and, and Jack, it is something you didn't hear much about a year ago, but it is something you hear quite a bit more often now, I don't know if there's better ways of communicating information, and we hear about it more often, but it is somewhat disconcerting direction we're going to take.
I, I just want to mention another component when I presented this thought. The first component was, you assume who memory you may be. You did something very, very, very wrong. And you brought in people from all over, like, you're the same with that. You should be doing something wrong. Darn it, there's got to be a penalty for that, because you did something very wrong. And to take the up and down comes a penalty, we have in Pennsylvania, where student A gets a slap on the wrist, and student A, student B gets a jail for a year. I think first of all, there's got to be a statewide rule. And I told you what it was, a fine, and you lose your driver's license. The second component of, of what I presented to Mr. Dunbar is exactly what all of you were saying. You've now found the perpetrator, he or she, yeah, I did, you caught me, then you started working with them to straighten them out. But to say it's, never mind, it's okay that you did that, I feel is very, very wrong, and it's going to keep going, and it's going to keep expanding.
We're going to take a couple more questions, because we have a backlog from the internet and getting ready to close.
Do you support impeachment of Attorney General Kathleen Cain?
Uh, did there was a net question? I, I will say this much, in all honesty, our Attorney General is, is having a bad week, that's for certain. I believe her, uh, her spokesperson quit again today too, that's her sixth one. I would prefer to see her resign. I think she does need to resign, I don't think she can effectively do her job anymore. And this isn't Democrat, Republican, this is just being honest. Uh, when you have picked and choose what, what you want to go, what you want to defend when you're the Attorney General, you're supposed to defend everything that the state does, everything that has to do with the state. You can't pick or choose your issues. That started a process. To turn a blind eye to corruption, political corruption, to turn a blind eye to state representative states. representatives taking envelopes full of money and not prosecute them, if you're the Attorney General? I mean, her, her answer, her answer was that it was racially biased, and it should've proved that I may have believed it, but, uh, the District Attorney of Philadelphia, who is black, did not agree with her, prosecuted it and actually convicted it. So those episodes there, the grand jury obviously has issued a, a, a ruling that they feel she should be indicted. If she's indicted, she should resign. I would hope that she would spare us the embarrassment of an impeachment proceeding, because I don't think that is productive for anybody. Yes?
What is paycheck protection?
Paycheck protection. Where's my, your paycheck protection? You know what that is? Paycheck protection has to deal with union dues you have out of your paycheck. There's a bill out that says that unions cannot withhold union dues out of the paycheck, because the unions are using some of that money for political activities. They're using it for political action. They, they have two parts for your union dues. One part is your union dues, another part is your political action duty. This is essentially targeted teachers. Is it not it?
Absolutely.
Okay. This is essentially targeted teachers in PSEF. Former teacher, right?
Yes.
Former teacher, so, hi Carol. Carol, are you a teacher as well? I, I know that. Good. If, if PSE dues, you pay a percentage of your dues, and, and part of it goes to union dues, and part of it goes to political action. The government's not supposed to handle political money. They're not supposed to. The bill originally has drafted, said you can't collect union dues. Which to me, that's, that's, you know, throwing the baby out with the bathwater and that's overkill. You're trying to accomplish something and just penalize somebody along the way. I, I have supported the idea of, let them hold the union dues. Let them withhold your dues out of their paycheck. The local action money, let them write a separate check. If you're so, if you're so inclined to write a separate check, that's fine. If you're not inclined to do it, that's fine. You don't have to. But let them hold your union dues. Now, part of, part of the issue was, the argument was, when that was proposed, is somebody said, "Well, there's soft money in the union dues." There's part of that money in the union dues that may be used, that isn't used for direct contributions, but it's used for advertising. You know, that's just getting too deep into the wood for me. Let them hold the union dues. Let them not withhold local action money. And we do gotta finish up there, so hopefully, okay.
I, I wanna circle back.
Yes, sir. I think, to understand the frustration that we residents have, that have been involved in this issue for several years now, I'm gonna read you part of the minutes from the May twentieth public hearing meeting of the zoning, uh, the zoning ordinance in Mac. Okay, this was the Pen Townsia Public Hearing Meeting. And this was after a lot of residents had commented on concerns that we have about this drilling being in residential areas, being five or six hundred feet from our houses, all that kind of thing. I sympathize and I agree with a lot of comments.
Who's saying this? Sorry?
This is the solicitor, Mr. Malat.
Right.
I sympathize and I agree with a lot of comments. However, we are somewhat hamstrung because of the way the law is written, and the other provisions of the Oil and Gas Act that, and you mentioned the resident's name, I'm not gonna mention it, and various people have addressed. They're still valid. You know, the courts only said, the part where municipalities had to allow it in every zoning district is a violation. Other parts are still valid. So it's up to the legislator and the people to go to their legislators and request that the legislator change the act to give the citizens more rights. So we're stuck in the middle of this issue. We can't, we go to our local re, uh, representatives, and they tell us it's...
I, I know, I know exactly where you're going.
You're telling us, it's, we put here, they put back here. Earlier tonight, you said, "Go to your local representatives. They have the power."
I didn't say that. I said, "I stand behind the decision."
Right, okay, but basically, that's what...
I never pointed you in her direction.
Okay, all right. So what would you do in our, if you were in our shoes? You had this industrial process that was going to be in your backyard, and, and you can't get anybody, whether it's you at the state level, or our local officials, to do anything.
I have a problem.
Let's stay, let's, let's stay on this topic.
Yeah, and I, so we're all into this. You okay? Thought she was going down for a second. Lost my train of thought. And, and fifteen hundred feet from my house. I have kids at my house. I'm down, downstream. I have a different opinion than you do, which, you know, it's fine. Fair enough. It makes the world go round. There's nothing to matter with that. Aside from what you've already done, like your voice, you heard. There isn't, as far as Pennsylvania legislation. I don't think realistically, there are bills that propose, Great Republic has proposed, Great Republic and Delaware County, has proposed at least twenty different works on those. Those bills are produced, they're not, they're not widespread support for. There really isn't. So I mean, if those bills would come to the House floor for a vote, it would be imposed down.
So you're not willing to go back for us and the township as a whole, which is going to be threatened by this industry? It's going to change the entire makeup of this, of this township.
I will respectfully disagree. I will respectfully disagree.
So that's, that's your, that's your...
I will respect, I don't believe it will change the township in this, uh, we could have this discussion online, but I, I have to, the one across it, it is an industrial site. I'm not denying it. There will be no shit, but there will be the worst. I'm not denying that. After the process is done, you know, you go hard in those, you would have to look for
But that's the question, when it's done, if it's ever done.
It, it's not the most difficult thing you can face, though, but, and we do have, we do have to close, Chuck, if you have your hand open.
Yeah, but I was gonna say, if I were to catch, I'm gonna say, okay, if I'm a property owner, and my family's been in the formal business for years, and there's no money to worry about, what would you rather us do? Sell our farm to a developer, and put all kind of notes there, and cause more problems with the infrastructure? Well, why should I have the right people? Why should I have to throw my property? I think it's a two-way street. And like I said, there are different opinions.
Do you have a question?
I had a question that related to a lot of what you said, that you're in this thing. Uh, part of the deal of needing more money, how about we back to the old Republican deal of streamlining and straightening out some of the corruption of states? Just use an example, you saw the news, Pen Hill, school debt, which, nine million dollars in debt, which the state oversees that. We just had an incident here in Norwood with a known problem with drugs being a teacher up there. That should've been jumped on long before it ever came out. And this happened, that her dad has a very influential, which, talk about resign, resigning, maybe that should be a case there, because dad's was way out of line, and they said, the, the thing is, she was struggling with drugs. Why was she allowed to be in that school?
And I know, there's a lot of Norwood kids here. First off, let's make sure we got our facts. She was there before Dr. Kerr was hired.
Dr. Kerr was her boss.
The Dr. Kerr was her boss. Son of your mom, his daughter. I don't know. I'm asking. If you're on hold somebody accountable, you have to have a reason to hold somebody accountable.
Well, I feel like when you did that, I was probably pissed here. I don't think she really wanted things enough.
You would've said that. Uh, as far as Pen Hills, what, the state doesn't have directors like Pen Hills.
Well, the state constitution has right over all school debt.
And I think part of the problem is, is for years, acceptable behavior in Pennsylvania was, when something goes wrong, just kind of sweep it under the rug. And, and, and we've had that, a perfect example, that's the Turnpike Commission. The Turnpike Commission, which for years, essentially, you know, took bribes, kickbacks, and whatnot, and gave vendors contracts based upon those bribes, kickbacks, and whatnot. And everybody walks away. Nobody's held accountable. That's what we're trying to do with the government reform caucus.
That, that, that's what I was saying.
That is what the government reform caucus is trying to do. We're trying, we're trying to make it solid stance, and say, "Look." Like I said, a black eye for one is a black eye for all. And all, and even if small, even small problems are major problems when you're the elected official or the former official. Because we've lost the trust and faith of all these kids. We've lost the trust and faith of all these adults. My popularity, I mean, personally, but the House of Representatives, we're improving the way that, like, twenty percent. I, I don't blame anybody. I was probably in that eighty percent maybe, that's true, before I got there. So we, we need to really just make a stance, make change.
Well, I'll tell you, if some of this stuff, shall I say, investigated a little closer or something, were affording, a lot of money could be saved right there. You know, prevention is worth the price of cure.
And I agree. And I, and I think the best way to do that, in some states, the best way to do that is to be transparent and accountability. We established, uh, something called Pen Watch. Every single dollar that's spent in the state is on internet. It goes, "Look at them." It's on Pen Watch. No, that doesn't, you can easily tell where it all went, but this is, these are the steps that's been taken to try and raise that level of confidence and let people know that, like, I, I can actually go and check to see how these dollars are being spent.
Well, the big thing is, and it comes from federal, state, local, everything, anybody runs for office, the first thing that they do is, "We're gonna get money for education." Let's get some accountability on the other end. Don't just keep throwing money at it, because it's quite evident, a lot of it's being wasted, and I'm saying that conservatively, but...
But I will say this much. I represent two state districts. I represent Norwood, and I represent Pen Trafford. They're both bargains. They're both bargains. These kids get a really good, solid education, and our taxes are not that high in comparison to other parts of the state. So at least in my neck of the woods, education, you know, it's worked, it works. To get my, my question.
Are there any plans to improve or clarify Pennsylvania's distracted driving laws?
There is, there is been discussion, but no bills introduced above the, take care, uh, above the distracted driving law. What is happening is technology is kind of coming up to us. So the question is, should we outlaw cell phones in the car? You call. You, you're on the phone. Put my daughter in the car. Jen just got a brand new car. That's really good. What about the other, cell phones in the car? Should we be allowed?
I don't disagree with the laws. I think it's good for safety, but, uh, I know I may also use my cell phone for GPS, so I think I can manage the karma. It's the same entire thing, so I think...
All right, the law right now, you can't text.
Yeah.
We do all know that, right? You can talk. You're not talking right now. The bill that's out there right now is to eliminate talking. My point is that by the time we get the cracks in the wall, technology's caught up to us because we're all, how many cars have, uh, what's your phone?
Help me out.
And we can, we can press a little button on the little, you know, with your cell phone. Does everybody have that in their car? No. Yeah, her car's been a throw around agenda. Or then you can't take my daughter in the car, so you can just... So should we pass the law against, to eliminate cell phones out in the car?
I mean, I have a mine phone, personally, have the carload on it, so I only have, like, four options on it. I can also talk to it, so it's possible to do. So I feel like by the time I'm feeling that, it's gonna be obsolete.
I, I agree. I really do. I mean, I think I totally would pass. And I understand, when we pass something like that, enforcement is next to impossible. It's really, it's hard. How do you enforce texting and driving? Listen, it's eight thirty, and I promised everybody we would be done at eight thirty. I'm sorry if there's still any questions. Feel free to call me and talk to me in my office anytime.